Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Here.
Mrs. Lane?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Krafcek?
Here.
Mr. Parzak?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape May County Herald on January 4th, 2018. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to start the work session with A&amp;F. Mrs. Lane?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to turn it over to Jill. A&amp;F is having their meeting April 9th, and we have quite a number of things to review, which will be brought up at the next, our next work session. So for tonight, we'll proceed with the departments.
Okay, thank you. I want to start with the borough engineer, please.
Thank you.
Yes, it is.
So I have an update on two capital improvement projects for mayor and council. The first one is the 95th Street bathroom renovation project that's currently being finalized for public bidding. We had a very productive meeting last Wednesday where we were able to finalize the floor plans, fixtures, and finishes. I actually had an opportunity to be an interior designer for about 15 to 20 minutes, which was interesting. We will be requesting a motion to bid from council at the April 17th meeting with a tentative public bid advertisement date of April 24th. So we're very happy the way that project has progressed. Second item is the 94th Street and 104th Street bulkhead replacement project, which is still in design, and we have geotechnical boring scheduled for next week. Moving along, we are finalizing the flood mitigation options for the Marina boat ramp. So I can say definitively here tonight that we have determined that the landward portion of the ramp can actually be raised to elevation 6.0 in the 1988 datum, which would have protected you from all flooding over the last 18 years with the exception of two, which was Jonas and Hurricane Sandy. We're also preparing a concept to reorient a boat ramp from east to west, which would allow you to bring that landward portion up to the existing elevation of the bulkhead, which is 6.3, and should you go to elevation eight with your new ordinance, I want to match that, you could do that as well because you have enough real estate going east to west to do that. That obviously is going to be a larger ticket item, but could be folded into a Cape May County Open Space application for 2018. If you're looking to revitalize the Marina, you'll have two cracks at that application, which is in August and December. So all of this nice stuff, construction cost estimates, pros, cons, drawings, will be delivered to Jill by Friday for borough consideration. And lastly, we are currently working with Jill and Grant to identify and evaluate various streets that have come across into the, into consideration for the borough's 2018 utility row program. We're going to be providing those estimates over to Jill and Grant, and then I guess decisions will be made as to what is selected for your 2018 utility row program. That is my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mark?
The boat ramp, I apologize, I wasn't listening real closely, but the, if we go to, if the decision is made to go to eight, you say we can accommodate eight foot with the new design and installation of this ramp, correct? How much more, how much more real estate does that require than the 6.3?
I don't have that right in front of me, but I believe it's probably another 20 to 30 feet. And just to give you a sneak peek at costs, the raising of the existing boat ramp to six is going to be in a neighborhood of $230,000 to $250,000. The numbers that we're polishing right now for the east-west boat ramp is probably going to be about $700,000, because that's major brain surgery there to reorient all that.
Million five.
But again, if it's folded into a revitalization plan, if you should choose to do that, we could, you know, sit down with Cape May County Open Space and somehow.
And either option could be incorporated into, or you'd have a better shot at the larger one.
I think either, it depends on how we present it. But I think either option may, has a very good chance of being eligible if it's folded into an overall package. If it's to improve functionality, to create more uses at the site, as opposed to consider it to be maintenance, then we'll have a better shot at getting that funding. And I would recommend that the boroughs sit down at a pre-application meeting with Leslie Gemenno and staff to talk this all through, because they will help us polish that.
Mark, when we did a work session, we talked about the gate, and we also talked about elevating the road. When you gave all these prices, is any of that incorporated in this?
No.
So that would be a grant we'd go after?
So, so the putting up the gate option is going to be probably your least costly option. There'll be pros and cons to that. So you're going to get this in a nice memorandum, so you can chew on it.
Good.
And decide.
And any, if we were to use open space funds, we probably could not charge for use of the ramp then? You think?
I don't know.
Could you, I didn't hear the first part here, sorry.
Would we be able to continue to charge for use of the ramp?
That's something that we, I, we probably wouldn't be able to give you an answer now until we went into the actual application with the county to see whether or not they would put some type of restriction on it. We did have those kind of restrictions with the tennis courts. We are still allowed to charge some fees, but we were restricted, so yes, that's, that is a possibility. They may say, if you're using our funds, then it has to be open to everybody and you can't charge. If we have legitimate reason for the fee, they may come back and say yes, but I think it's something that we have to totally vet out with them.
Do we charge 24/7? Do we charge 24/7 at that ramp, or is it just during like nine to five, or seven to three, or something? Once we put in that kiosk? Once we put in the kiosk and there was no longer a person there, then it's 24 hours you pay to drop the boat in.
Putting the fee structured for maintenance, there has to be maintenance to that ramp and the use of it with the boats and the vehicles and so forth.
Right, and like I said, these are, these are questions that we would present to them when we, when we sit down to, you know, to vet out the project. The first, the first thing would be to internally sit down and come up with a desired plan of what we want to see develop there. And then the second thing would be go to the county, share with them what our thoughts are, have them give us the input on whether or not certain aspects would be covered, certain things wouldn't be covered, get a good feel before we actually do the application.
And I, I think the borough actually collects the fees for the boat slips, so you don't charge to use the ramp?
No, we do charge.
We charge for the ramp. Yeah, there's a kiosk there, yes.
Oh, to actually get down the ramp?
Yep.
Yes, we do both. Would it be possible to get a figure from last year on how much income we really had from there, so that we could see?
Yeah, it's under 10,000.
If we're going to lose?
I know it's under 10,000.
10,000.
And if the borough chooses to submit that application, we're going to be really refined in how we package that, because this, that is 100% construction grant, special allotment. So we want to make sure.
Right.
Package that properly.
Yeah.
If you choose to submit a grant application.
Yeah.
It's 100% construction.
Just like the, the special round of funding for the bikeway initiative, so.
Yeah, that's good.
Which would also include the engineering fees where other ones did not, so.
So we really got to put our brains together on that.
So, so you're going to, you're going to give us a few different options on the, on the east-west ramp?
You're actually going to get four options. That was three before, now it's four.
Okay, so what are they again? What?
Raise the existing boat ramp in the spot that it is.
Okay.
That's option 1A. I guess option 2B is put a new ramp in east to west and decommission the existing boat ramp. The second option is to throw up the floodgate, just kind of like what was there before. And the third one is to look at an automated gate, which I don't think we're going to land much, much success with that. But it'll be there as an option, you'll have your pros and cons.
The north-south ramp, you know, in the current location, there's not enough real estate there to go to eight feet, is there?
No, because what would happen at that point is you now have to start peeling up, okay, you'd have to start peeling up the street. Parking lot's not a big deal, because we could fill the parking lot, it wouldn't affect anybody, but you have condominiums right up the street there, so now you're, you're getting into surveying on private property, shooting doorsteps or steps, door elevations to see how high, and it becomes, it becomes complicated.
Is it possible to go six feet there, 6.3?
We got it to six.
Okay.
6.3, 6.3 would put you at where it is today, the existing bulkhead elevation today.
So we're really coming down to, we're either going to put a gate there, or we're going to go east-west, more than likely?
Maybe.
Okay.
And when is the, what is the timeframe for us to be able to apply for a grant? Have all this in play?
They have two funding cycles for the special allotment. It's August of this year and December of this year.
Is it feasible to shoot for August, or?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to work towards that, and if, you know, if we don't feel that we're comfortable with applying for the, the first round, then we'll, we'll delay it to the second round, but we definitely have enough time to really do our research on it and come up with a solid recommendation.
And I think a pre-application meeting with the county would be hugely immense.
Yeah.
Would, very helpful. Say we'll help polish that stone.
All right, next, I'd like to bring the tax assessor up. Give her an update, please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So far, tax appeal-wise, we have 36 tax appeals. About half of them came in yesterday because they thought it was the deadline, but we have until May 1st to file a tax appeal. Of those 36, nine are condominiums, seven are bayfront single families, six are beach front, I'm sorry, six are beach block, and two are bayfront. So, you know, 36 is less than 1%, so it's not too bad so far. We'll see what happens in the next month. A lot of times, people wait till the very last minute, though. But as I said, Vital is responsible for defending the assessments. I talked to Jill today, I'm going to send all of them, and we'll see where we go from there. Otherwise, I'm, you know, still in the weeds. Nothing changed there. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
You want to send Debbie up?
Yes.
Sorry. The collector will be coming up. We apologize, we're shorthanded downstairs, so as one's done, the other one goes down and comes back up, so. I guess at this point, we can bring up construction and zoning for their, just general reports.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The reeds is underway. They just set the planking for the first floor. It's a good start. Then we'll set steel for the second floor and put the active floor. And, and set the planking accordingly, and then probably in another week or two, it'll have the roof on it. That'll, that'll go pretty quick, once they get the steel set. The planking and the prefab is pretty, pretty fast. Same thing with the, the Stone Harbor Pizza project. They have the steel set for that also. It's a, it's another prefab slab situation, and the, the walls are also prefab, just like Reed's building is. Single-family home construction is still going pretty steady, obviously in town. It's a little slow right now because they're in a, a little lull, just because of where they're at with mechanicals and, and all the framing that they're doing right now. I haven't, I haven't really gotten slammed with too many framing inspections lately because they're, they're in the midst of, of mechanicals. We had 32 building permits issued last month, seven dumpsters. We're down probably almost by half, as far as how busy it was in the office from last month with, with permits. That's all I have.
When did that new regulation come into effect, as far as things that were considered maintenance, didn't require permits, like the siding and roofing? Was that?
That was in.
When did that, is that in effect?
October.
When did it first come into effect?
I know, that was March what? March 5th. March 5th. Yeah.
Okay, because I wonder if that's the reason why you got less permits coming in, because they don't have to.
Well, no, actually, that wasn't, that didn't affect us this past month that much. Maybe.
Okay.
One or two permits, it wasn't that bad. There's still some interpretation issues with this process, because there's, whether it, it has to do with any kind of a structural, any new decks will still need a permit. It'll just be replacement of existing decks and repairs, wouldn't need it. But I'm hearing a lot of, there's a lot of feedback from other offices, other municipalities, where they're still going to require these builders to get permits for a lot of this work, because they're considering it structural, whether it be stairs. One thing that didn't make any sense to me was, there was a, a permit came into another town, and I talked to the construction official there and said that there was just a stair project, and he called the state, and somebody from the state said that he would need it. I would, I would've said no, that they didn't need it, but there was a representative from DCA that said, yes, you still need a permit for that.
And it was replacing stairs?
Which it.
It was replacing stairs?
It was just replacing the stairs, yeah, which is a conflict as far as the, the law that was passed, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's still, it's, it's still gray. You know, we're going to, we'll be fine tuning it ourselves by making calls to the state to see whether it actually needs a permit or not, but there are definitive areas in that law that they passed where they don't need permits, but I think we're still going to require them for a lot of things.
Okay.
Mike, was that interior or exterior stairs?
Exterior.
Exterior only?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So you don't need it for siding, but you need it for the steps to put the siding?
Well, you'll need it for siding if it's made out of polypropylene material, which it's, most of the siding has polypropylene in it.
Oh.
But they won't need it for cedar shakes, any kind of hardy board siding, like cementatious type siding. Anything that's flammable is what they're still going to want a permit for.
Cedar shakes are flammable?
Cedar shakes, any more confusing?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that doesn't make any sense to me either, yeah.
Yeah.
Kind of a strange law, but, you know, considering.
They won't burn as easily.
No, not as easily, but they'll burn.
Anything more for construction? If not, we'll bring zoning Ray up.
Zoning Ray.
As opposed to safety.
Good evening. As you can see on your bench, I have Paul Mott and I, Paul Cates from Associates, and I have put together some more drawings for you. These drawings have to do with an ordinance you're looking at to move the pools or allow pools to go up to and possibly within the established bulkhead line. The first drawing we did is, it's pretty realistic. It actually shows where the established bulkhead line is and the actual bulkhead line on Sunset Drive in Corinthian. Over on the bay side, all the way on the west, they are one line. They run together. And as you go into the inlet, or into the harbor there, the established bulkhead line is 20 to 30 feet back from the bulkhead. So we drew this so you can see how the bulkhead varies throughout the whole island. That's the whole purpose of that first drawing there.
Ray?
Yes?
Can you do me, can we hold off on that?
Oh, okay.
I just want to finish up the other departments, and then we'll bring Paul up to continue with that discussion.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, that was my, it's okay. Debbie, you want to do?
Sorry about that.
Yeah, we'll be quick with the rest.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
So the homestead file came in, and your duplicate coupon went out if you are receiving a homestead rebate. We're working on month end. The guys are reading meters, and that's the life in the tax office this week. Receipts are coming in for the May quarter as well.
Okay, thanks, Deb.
Thank you.
Borough clerk, you want to do your?
Cash reports, the cash balance for the checking account, $4,918,887.60. Disbursements this month, $4,241,477.31. In the water and sewer department, cash balance, $1,30873.39. And the disbursements this month, $99,508.38. The borough clerk's office this month, fees taken in, $19,708. And in the construction office, total fees, $97,024.
Okay, then, I guess can we go into the planning board, and that'll segue right into the discussion on the zoning change?
Yep, yep, because that's what we have for the planning board report, is basically the, the planning board voted to bring this ordinance forward to council for consideration. And I had asked Ray if he could do a Ray overlay, so we could get an idea of the visual, so we could see what we're looking at, so if you could just come up and Paul as well.
Have we had problems on the bayfront? Is that why this came up?
It's not that we've had problems, it's just in looking at planning, you know, which the planning board is charged with, it just seems to be so inconsistent in different areas of town, and it's something that we started to discuss and look at, and as we looked at it, this is, is what we saw, how some areas is significant changes, or significant differences between the actual bulkhead line and the established bulkhead line.
Well, and also to add, what the established bulkhead line, the whole idea and premise behind that, what is an imaginary line that sometimes runs concurrent, as you'll see with actual bulkheads, is to preserve viewpoints and view sightlines for properties. The feeling of the planning board is that the purpose and intent of that established bulkhead line should not interfere with the installation of a pool, because a pool, as it's set by ordinance, does not interfere with those sightlines, yet it's designated as a structure. So it prevents people along the bayfront in certain circumstances from having a pool altogether, or having a slightly bigger pool, which is more usable and more manageable for bayfront living. So the purpose and intent of the established bulkhead line being put in place really has nothing to do with pools. So a bunch of bayfront owners have asked for that relief for, I think, many years now, and have never gotten that relief, and it's been brought back before the planning board again, and the planning board's recommending that we do something about it.
So just so I understand this a little bit more, if a pool is built on Corinthian, is it built at the established bulkhead line, or is it built at the actual bulkhead line?
Right now, now if you go to this drawing, the smaller, not clear drawing, but the paper drawing, a pool, being a structure, has to be 10 feet back from the established bulkhead line.
Okay.
And on Corinthian, on this drawing, the established bulkhead line is the one that's about 20 feet on the land. And then 10 more feet back is where your pool has to be constructed, so your pool would be almost against the house, as, as this drawing shows, could be close to against the house, if you even have enough space to build one on that street. You may not even have the space, because of the, the zoning law requiring it to be 10 foot from that established bulkhead line. And as Charles was saying, that's, so then if you go to diagram A, we've given two proposals here, two, two possible solutions. Diagram A would be allowing the pool to go up to the established bulkhead line. And again, you got to always keep in mind that this established bulkhead line moves, depending on where you are along the, along the bay. It could be right on the bulkhead, or it could be the 20 or so feet back. Okay? The next mile hour that we did, B, that I labeled B, is if the established, or if the pool, if we change the ordinance so the pool can go all the way to the bulkhead, if you remove the established bulkhead line out of the equation, then the pool could go even further. This would be subject to CAFRA's rules, however, where a pool is a permit-by-rule type permit, which requires 15 feet from the waterward side of the bulkhead, unless you get special permission from CAFRA. You have to prove that your pool will not anyway jeopardize the replacement or repairs of the bulkhead and things of that nature.
Ray, if I can just step in, it's my understanding with some research that CAFRA generally does allow pools to come close to the existing bulkhead, subject to structural integrity requirement.
Correct.
They will, they will routinely allow a permit to be approved, say, within two or three feet of an actual bulkhead, as long as the, the specs for that bulkhead are sufficient to show that replacement of that bulkhead in the future at some point can be done without, without interfering with the integrity of that pool.
Yes.
My understanding is that it's routinely permitted, under specific guidelines from CAFRA, promulgated from CAFRA.
Exactly, it's got to come from them, yes.
But how will they, I, I mean, I'm, I'm interested in all this, and I'm understanding it, and I think that this is a good subject to talk about, but in my humble opinion, we are talking about raising bulkhead heights. We don't have that ordinance ready yet, so that's in the mix. To me, that's in, that should be done first, before we talk about doing this, because it's intense, what we're working on, to get the bulkhead to where it's got to go, and I think that's going to affect this.
That's next. That's, we've also shown that on the same drawing.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
If you go to the original drawing, the, the bulkhead is at 6.2 feet, 1988 datum. So the deck would be at 8.7, 1988. And then when you use the overlays, the red lines show the additional height of the bulkhead and the deck. That would be allowed if the zoning ordinance stays the same, allowing the 30 inches above the plane of the bulkhead. So we, we tried to incorporate both of them, so that you could look at both these scenarios at the same time, and, and keep this all in mind. But as, as Charles was saying, if right today, or what's prepared now, is the pool ordinance, with the location of that pool, and either way, the current ordinance or the future, the pool does not obstruct the vision at all. When that deck rises, the pool, along with the deck, is going to obstruct the view by another 1.8 feet. So it is something you want to keep in mind, and that's why we put both of those on this same drawing for you.
I'd like to think creatively as to how, if you had a, had a pool all the way up against the bulkhead, or as close as you're saying you want to put it, and then it, the person needs to replace it, that's, that I'd like to understand better. The pool, or the, or the pool needs to be repaired, or the bulkhead.
Right.
Needs to be repaired.
But even barring that, I think.
Because there's those tieback things.
One thing Ray didn't mention with this drawing, that it illustrates clearly, is these, the, the properties on the right side of the drawing, they have ample room to put a pool where currently they're unable. And they could even, some of these properties could meet CAFRA's 15-foot rule, put a pool, and, but they wouldn't be in compliance with the current ordinance. So it's offering relief to properties like that. Now whether or not you want to allow them to go beyond that 15 feet, that could be a separate discussion, but I think allowing them to the, the established bulkhead inside that 10 feet would create a lot of relief for people in situations like that.
So we're suggesting 10 feet from the actual bulkhead line, not the two or so feet that you had referenced?
It's not a choice as yours. Right now, it is 10 foot right now. It's 10 foot from the established.
From the established bulkhead, right.
Two mile hours, one would be bring it right up to the established bulkhead line, and the other is up to the actual bulkhead.
Right.
That's a choice that.
And that sort of comes from the fact that if you're building a pool that is not on the bay, you have to say 10 feet.
Right.
Off of your neighbors.
Right.
As you and I both.
Yeah, yeah.
One, one scenario, one scenario which is not shown here, is the, the extreme opposite, is where the established bulkhead line actually lies out in the water, and there's locations, and we're not showing that here.
Right.
Where our ordinance reads now, 10, 10 feet from the established bulkhead line. That established bulkhead line is in the water, let's say, let's say it's 15 feet in the water. 10 feet from there is still in the water. So right now, we can. So right now, we can, we can put a pool up to the bulkhead right now, like Josie was just concerned about. You can do it now at properties where that established bulkhead line lies out in the water more than ten feet.
How do you handle them when they come?
I, I, we haven't had one, I haven't had one of those since I've been here. But I understand from speaking to, um, Joanne, that there was some litigation on that.
Yep.
And that the borough won the litigation, that the, their, their established bulkhead line was upheld in the courts, from what I understand. I don't know the details of it, but-
So what is the point of the established bulkhead line?
Well, I think what we need to know is the history of it, right.
It's preserving sightlines is the-
Yeah, that's the only thing that we've been able to, and we can't find that in writing anywhere.
Seth, that comes, just so everyone knows, that comes from Bill Cathcart at Planning Board Subcommittee Meetings. Is the original intent and purpose was to make sure buildings do not encroach too close to the water and block neighbors' views, especially on curved areas of the island. Where if you start to encroach, you're gonna start to block someone's view when their, when their view would go in, their preferred view would go in that direction.
So then who went and drew them? Had it all come to be?
That's the question right now.
Yeah, we're, we're still, Sue's been pulling out, um, minutes for us and copies of ordinances and the amendments. Um, and we've been trying to, trying to get something that's actually in writing on that. Ray did check with our former zoning officer and she did say the same thing that, um, was relayed to Charles, that it was to protect the, the views of, um, but primarily in the lagoon areas because there was an amendment later on where on the, the actual bay area, they, they amended so that they, the actual bulkhead and the bulkhead line actually were the same. But in the lagoon areas, and, and that's one of the things that Ray gave you, you can see that, that the significant difference in those. So like I said, we are still trying to gather as much information on there because we don't want you to go ahead and change something and then find something later in the minutes that said, there's a different reason than what we believe. We just want to make sure that-
So you can build a deck in there, you can do anything, you just can't have a pool?
Yeah. And, and this-
That's exactly right. Right now, you can build a deck up to thirty inches above that bulkhead line, straight out, and you're completely legal. In my mind, it's really simple. Whether there's a pool sunk in that deck or not makes absolutely no difference. Um, what, if anyone can tell me what the difference is, I'd sure like to know. If there, in fact, if anything, it promotes less obstruction because generally speaking, you have furniture all over a deck. So if now you have a big swath of that deck that has a pool that people are now stepping down into, if anything, you're promoting even better sightlines. And, and from a practical standpoint, this is where our market is and this is what homeowners want. I mean, this is why they come to Stone Harbor, to enjoy the ocean and then go home and enjoy a pool. That's the nature of our community and that's what people demand. So I think, A, number one, the purpose and intent of installing or making the established bulkhead line as part of our ordinance was, is well-intended, well-founded. However, somewhere along the line, incorporating pools as a structure intended to be regulated by that established bulkhead line is, is and, um, and was misguided. I think it needs to be excluded so that, uh, it falls in line with the original purpose and intent.
Well, our founding fathers really thought out the planning of this town so well that I would hate to see us do something that just because people want it doesn't always make it a good thing. So that wasn't what I was gonna say until you made that remark. And I'm, I, the way this town is laid out and the way it has been preserved, um, is so far superior to so many shore towns that we're very fortunate. And I wouldn't want to see us do anything that would in any way hinder what has been set up and so well thought out. That said, I'd like to go back to the question that Josie raised earlier. Are we putting the cart before the horse? Should we first get the bulkhead heights and all established and take that into consideration before we get involved? Or just work on everything all at one time? So I'll direct that to you.
I think this ordinance is really about the horizontal positioning of that pool, not so much the vertical. I mean, if you look at, if you look at this, at this sketch, right? So all along Corinthian, I mean, there's probably twenty-five homes here that cannot put a pool anywhere in their backyard, even though they've got plenty of space for it. And it's all because of that established bulkhead line. So, you know, my, my concern with this is, uh, should we or should we not have some required, uh, setback from the existing bulkhead line? Not so, so that, you know, people don't build right out to the bulkhead. So whether it's a five-foot setback or whatever's decided. Because if, when, as we're going forward, if we go to, if we do decide to go to an eight-foot bulkhead height and then we put thirty inches on top of it, you know, and that's, that's a lot of bulk we're putting out there right on the waterfront. So, I mean, I, I think, um, I think the intent of this ordinance, I think it's, I think it's the right thing to do. We just have to get some of these details, uh, in the right spot. I mean, cause like you, you know, CAFRA, uh, does regulate it, yet it doesn't regulate it. So that's not, I don't think that's something that, I think the boroughs should decide what they want or what they're comfortable with and put that in the ordinance and not rely on what, what CAFRA's gonna decide on any given day, what they want to do. You know, or where they give one property owner the ability to go up to the bulkhead and as an extra neighbor, they say, no, you can't go. You know, we, we don't want to go there with that, I don't think, you know, so, um.
Okay, I, I totally agree with you. The, um, what I think in answer to your question, Ms. Lane, is the, um-
Thank you.
The pool doesn't not necessarily change that, but when we do go to the bulkhead, you want to really keep this, the drawings we ju- we gave you for the deck height.
Yeah.
You might want to restrict the deck height. If you do increase the bulkhead, you might want to have wording in there that know you can, now the deck had, the deck height has to stay to the current height or something like that. That is, I would definitely look at that seriously. That, I don't think, as long as the ordinance, which I believe it does, it restricts the pool height to the height of that deck, I, I don't really see how the pool changes it much. But in, in that bulkhead ordinance, yes, you want to look at that one really long and hard. And, and get like the engineers here said, getting a lot of brains together on it when you go to look at that one.
Cause some towns do restrict that height.
Mm-hmm, yes.
For decks and things like that, patios.
Yeah.
This is just one example, Corinthian, you gave.
I was just gonna ask the same thing. Where else is this happening in town?
That's what I wanted to know.
And look, I actually-
Thank you.
Looked through the town and this was kind of showed the, the two basic extremes, where you had all this room and then you had it right on the bulkhead. But, um, I think in most of the lagoons, there's some variation of this. Some might not have as much room as this, but then others have, uh, in some locations more, in some locations less. It really does vary greatly across the island.
But so, most of them are on a curve?
Yes, most of them.
Correct, in the lagoons.
But back in the day, like Karen said, we, we, um, the davits, is that what it's called? That the boats used to-
Davit, you're right.
The davits that the boat sat on, we took those away because they obstructed your sight view. There are a few left in town on the, on the channel, but very few. So this is primarily what you're saying is for sightline. So that people don't see a pool up here and people jumping in and they're down here.
Right.
Got it.
And I do think that researching the, the, um, intended imaginary bulkhead line is worth finding out why and how and when it was done, because it was a long time ago.
I, um, I had a question on, Charles had mentioned that the, that established bulkhead line, there's actually some that actually go out into the water. In cases like that, would they have to go to CAFRA for a permit for that? And then would CAFRA actually allow them to build out into the water?
Not out into the water.
Right?
No, they would-
So I just, again, why did we, why did we do that?
CAFRA only looks at the actual bulkhead line. They don't even look at our established bulkhead line. Right, currently, this is a gap in our ordinance again that we've uncovered. A gap where that established bulkhead line, our ordinance says you can build out to it. So technically, right now, if your established bulkhead line lies anywhere more than ten feet beyond your actual bulkhead, I can build right up to the bulkhead, right now. Provided CAFRA approves the same, which they will or won't depending on-
But you already have a natural pool out there, so why are you gonna build another?
But see-
But that's an option, no.
Exactly.
But it's an option.
I'm just saying, right now, it is an option to already go to the bulkhead in certain locations, depending on where that line is. There's, our, our ordinance is to keep people back off of that established bulkhead line. In areas where it lies in the water, clearly, there's no, there's no worry about sightlines because it's all the way out there in the water. So there's no concern as to sightlines in that area.
And without the maps, we don't know if we're looking at six-foot bulkheads that are gonna have to be dealt with in the next, however, point of time. And I don't think we should complicate that right now. I think this is worth researching and finding out the established bulkhead line and, and seeing it sort of everywhere. Don't just pick Corinthian, um, right? Because that seems like you're-
Well, cause you're showing, and you're showing that these people can't do it. I think that that's the important one to see.
Yeah, but I mean-
Cause you see this actually devalues their property when somebody's going to look to build and they want a pool and they say, you know what, I'm going somewhere else because I can't get a nice pool there.
That's exactly right.
Then we need to see the whole town.
Right, I understand, I understand seeing in other places, but what I, I think seeing these extremes is, um, it, it really is telling and it just also is saying, this is, these, it's a hardship, so to speak, in that they can't develop properties that somebody across the way can. And if it's supposed to be all about sightlines, it's flat, the pool's flat. They can, you can build a deck, the entire expanse.
Right.
It doesn't matter what we do with bulkhead heights at this point, they can throw a deck up. So although I understand it is one all-encompassing picture, I don't know that we wait because there's, I, I think it's putting something off that people are being hurt by now.
I think, I think this is a, a very worthwhile discussion. I think it's something that, I think it's something that we have to address going forward. And I think it's, it's, I don't want to say it's simple, but it's pretty straightforward in that we're going to basically do away with an established bulkhead line and we're going to work off the existing bulkhead line, which you can see. So there's no longer an imaginary line going across the back of your backyard.
Just with regard to pools.
I think there's some-
With regard to pools, with regard to pools.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, there's some confusion, yeah, there was some confusion on that. Could you guys explain the proposed ordinance, what this one actually says? Cause I was a little confused and thought that, that we were gonna take it away, but then when, talking with you guys, if you could explain a little bit better.
The resolution and the proposed ordinance actually conflict right now.
Right.
That was part of the discussion.
Yeah.
The resolution states that pools will be allowed to the established bulkhead line. The language in the ordinance says that they'll be allowed to the bulkhead. So as Ray was saying, the truth may lie somewhere in between where, you know, you could put a ten-foot setback off the bulkhead and then depending on where that established bulkhead line, you may be able to cross it or you may be allowed up to it, but still keep them back from the bulkhead. But currently, the ordinance does conflict the way it was written.
Okay.
If we agree to use the existing bulkhead as our reference point going forward, then it's easy enough, whatever we decide to do, to say, okay, five feet back, six feet back, ten feet back, whatever, whatever we decide is the governing body. But then we're at least all on the same playing field throughout the whole island, you know? So it takes away that, I don't want to say it's an arbitrary line because it was drawn for a reason at some point. But, you know, no longer would you have properties with forty-foot backyards and you're telling them you can't put a pool in, right?
And just to go back, to revisit the purpose and intent, I mean, I don't think there's anyone amongst us that doesn't trust Bill Cathcart's opinion and his experience and his history here implicitly. And if anyone wants to call him on that, I recommend they do, to find out the original purpose and intent. So I don't want anyone to think this hasn't been vetted or thought about at planning board and that it's some sort of arbitrary process.
So the one, the, the second overlay B, you're showing the pool would have to be the same, the, uh, ten feet from the real bulkhead? Not the established bulkhead, the actual bulkhead?
Yeah, that's what that one illustrates.
And right now, the setback is ten feet, right, anywhere else in town?
The established bulkhead.
No, I mean, when, if you're putting in a pool in your backyard, it's a ten-foot-
Yes.
What, it's a ten-foot setback from your neighbor?
Yes.
Okay.
One other thing to consider, just when we talk about the sightlines, is the fences have to have a fence, uh, sorry, swimming pools have to have a fence around them at forty-eight inches. So when you talk about your sightlines, you, you've automatically got to have the fence there. That's for building code requirements.
Right, regardless of where that pool's located or how, how far it goes, you already have a forty-eight inch fence.
Right.
Somewhere between yourself and your pro- and your, your neighbor, right?
Anybody else?
So that's the, the property, right, right? The, the property ha- uh, has to have a fence around it. If your pool's, if your pool's thirty inches above ground, you don't need a fence on your property and a fence around your pool, right? It's just, you just need one, okay.
Well, yeah.
And you go down the sides, so you're, when you're on the bay and you have to have your fence, you're fenced along the sides with your pool. Do you have to have the fence that then it doesn't have to close, correct? So it goes straight.
Right.
Which always is quite fascinating, but anyway, so it goes straight. So again, though sight, the sight line is unobstructed because there's no fence along, well, you could put one if you wanted, but most homeowners are not. They're just going straight into the, to transition to the pool. Anybody else have anything more to say?
What's the next step?
The next step is, do we want to bring this forward for a first reading at the next council meeting?
I think we need to do more research and make sure that we know what the established bulkhead line was determined, why it was determined.
I agree.
I think they need to be in conjunction with one another because it just makes sense that one affects the other.
I agree.
I disagree, um, for reasons already stated. This is, um, this is actually, like Ray said, it's pretty, pretty simple and straightforward. And I think it's been demonstrated that, that, uh, it doesn't affect anything than what already exists. A pool will still exist in that deck that's permissible. Whether it's deck or pool, it's not going any higher than the deck could already go. So to me, it's really straightforward and simple. I would say that we bring this forward and, and I, I like Ray's idea that we work off the actual bulkhead as a specific frame of reference because then that, that line is what it is. It doesn't meander as the established bulkhead line does. And I think a, in order to not, um, I guess penalize anyone that, in, in the rare occasion, anyone that does have an established bulkhead line that runs in the water and penalize them by using, um, too stringent because that means a lot of their lot lies in the water. To, so in essence, working too far off the actual bulkhead would penalize those people because that's their building environment. They're allowed to go pretty far forward because most of their lot exists in the water, in the actual water, which obviously they can't build on. So I think a fair number off of that bulkhead is probably five feet off that bulkhead, the actual bulkhead.
Not the ten, as put on?
Not, not the ten off the actual bulkhead, right. Uh, and that's fine for people that have a large backyard, but there's also people that are not demonstrated on this first map that have an established bulkhead line and a lot of their property runs in the water. So they have a very short building envelope upland. So if you push them further back off their actual bulkhead, now you're limiting actually what they can build. So then the opposite is true if you push too far off the actual bulkhead. Does that make sense to?
Well, some of us are just hearing this for the first time. So I don't think that there is an absolute rush that we rush through this at this moment. I think it's all good discussions and I think if we can have those that are not, that this is the first time we've seen this, that we have a little bit of time to understand and see if there's any more questions.
Cause I would think, because there is, I mean, when you introduce the ordinance, it's not immediate to. We wouldn't even be introduced for two weeks.
Yeah.
And then another four weeks from there before it's even finalized is six weeks, so- so.
Well, I think, I think, I, I, I think we're kind of on the same page, I think, with the, the reference point, using the existing bulkhead as a reference point, but as I said earlier, I think we need to have some limitation in there, actually written into the ordinance, that says you're allowed to go this close to the bulkhead, or consequently stay this far off of that existing bulkhead line when you're putting the pool in, as opposed to leaving it to Caffra's whim, what they're gonna do on any given day. And that way, we have some uniformity in, in the borough for these bayfront properties.
Right.
I mean, if the Planning Board goes back and looks at this again, and flushes that out a little bit, then I have no problem.
We could take that back to, we could take that back on Monday and say, what, what kind, okay. We could start with that, and then, but in the meantime, if that, if the ordinance can actually start to be prepared, and we're plugging that number in.
Yeah, I think if I, if I heard, there seems to be a consensus that you want to go with the option B, which would be take into the existing bulkhead, the question is, is it?
How far?
Five, three feet, ten feet, right? The one question I do have off of Ray's statement to you guys would be with Caffra, if we have an existing ordinance says five feet, can they override that if someone applies?
Yeah, and I think you would want that language in there, provided Caffra's.
Yes, I just want to make sure that Ray understands that, by us creating the ordinance, they still will trump us with something that comes back. So you may still have property owners that have a ten-foot, or five-foot, or whatever, because it's going to be based on what they say, for whatever.
They would trump us to the more stringent side.
I'm sorry, what?
Whichever one of us is more stringent, we'll comply.
They would trump, trump us to the more stringent side. In other words, if we said.
Correct.
Five, Caffra could go back and say seven, this particular property.
Right.
But at least we'll be uniform in error.
And the converse is true, we could trump them by being more stringent. If they say three, and we're five, homeowner has to comply with us.
So we'll take it back Monday? Okay. Good work on the overlays.
Yeah.
Love the overlay.
I keep calling it a Ray overlay, but Paul has, Paul plays quite a role in making the overlays as well.
Ray on the overlay.
The Ray overlay. All right, where are we? Public Works? No, unless, is that it, A and F? Anything else?
That's it.
No? Okay.
Grant, please.
I don't know if I can get that much excitement out of my conversation here.
Yes, it is short and sweet.
One question I have for you is what the ladies were talking about, are you gonna, if someone comes in and says they want to put a pool in, and they have an established house, and they haven't changed the bulkhead height, and it's an old bulkhead, are you gonna still help and put the pool in?
Good question. With a bulkhead that's too low.
Rebuilding the bulkhead. That's my, that's the only question I would have.
Would the FEMA stuff perhaps come into play there, maybe? Because ones with the really lower bulkheads are usually, they're going to be the older homes, so if you're then putting in a pool, then the, does that count towards your renovation of the forty percent? So now it triggers, you gotta raise that bulkhead.
Absolutely.
Probably would. So that would be, I don't think.
It's really any, any.
Because they're mostly older homes, right? And what they assessed us all at with older homes, they're worth like, nothing. So that sixty, the forty percent would kick in, they'd have to raise the bulkhead.
Pool's not a structure?
Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to look at that, because like.
Does that go towards that forty percent?
It's not a structure.
It's not a structure.
That's my question.
Non-structure it might be.
Yeah.
Or is it just an improvement? How did we write it? Is it an improvement? I'd have to see how we worded that.
We'll analyze that and get back at it.
I like that answer.
We'll analyze that and get back to you.
Let's form a committee.
No, we are like Washington.
Oh, my gosh, enough.
Okay, you ready?
Bring it on, Grant.
Ready.
Did everybody get a March report?
Yes, and I have questions.
Did you read it?
Yes, and I have big questions.
There is an error in here, and I'm gonna ask questions later.
I prefer graphics and overlays, just so.
There was an error on the report, and I think Mrs. Lane found it. We'll find out.
We were hoping there was an error.
Okay, we'll see.
Do you want my question now, or do you want to give your report first?
Does it have to do with water?
Yes.
Of course.
Yes.
We're on the same page.
Wow, what the heck happened?
Nothing. Actually, it was a typo error. And I'll get to that, when I get to the water and sewer part. Okay, just some highlights. Point Road is closed for the season, will be closed until October. Vehicle ramps from one hundred and eleventh through one hundred and twenty-third have been closed off due to storm damage. ADA ramp at Eighty-third Street is looking like it's going to be done by the end of the month, hopefully, weather permitting. I don't know if you saw the guys out on Ninety-sixth Street pulling up some concrete, we're getting ready to put the kiosk electrical in for the Ninety-sixth Street. And they are taking out some concrete, so we can put conduit in for electricity, and then re-pour the pads. So that's underway. Let's see, the buildings crew is installing, did install a new Marina portable toilet cleanout station at Eighty-first Street. It's actually stainless steel now, it used to be a green, ugly-looking thing. What it's used for is anybody that has a boat that has a portable toilet that needs to be cleaned out, that's a station for them to do so. So they're not dumping it into the, to the back bays. And we actually got a grant to put that in. Took us a long time to get that grant, but we finally did get it secured and installed. Work continues on the upgrades of Public Works office area, carpets were put in last week. Luckily, I was not here when it was done, because it is disturbing the, the flow of everything that's going on at the, the office. All of the work cubicles have been installed, and now they're gonna tear my office apart, so. I'm gonna take a couple vacation days, so they can do it.
You're already, all right, you're limited.
It's a mess, my office right now, so. The project we have going on right now with the LED lighting at Public Works, our office, the lunchroom, the, the locker room, and the restroom have been completed. We have the stock in place right now to do most of the, the truck bays and, and work areas for Public Works. And that is all to try to bring down the, the electrical costs that that building has. Right now, we are one of the lowest electrical usage in town, even though we're, we're functioning more than twenty-four hours a day, in most cases. We, with the solar panels that we have on the roof, our, our electrical usage is, is low, we're trying to get it to a zero at Public Works. And it's amazing how much the difference is between an LED fixture and a fluorescent fixture in the cost. It's, it's amazing. Let's see, moving forward. The grounds crew has completed some extensive work on trimming trees on Second Avenue, and on some of the borough properties. Work on the storm water discharge on the bay side of Third Avenue at one eighteen to one twenty-three is not in completion yet, we're waiting for the weather to cooperate with us, so we can get that riprap that's sitting at the, the dead end at one hundred and twenty-third, so we can put it in. Right now, it's too wet in the area that we need to put it down. So we're waiting for a couple of dry days during the work week to get that established and done. I don't know if you noticed, but the islands were thatched, and they're completing mulching the beds right now, in preparation for the May plantings between the Borough and the Garden Club. We have one large pine tree right out here at Ninety-Fourth and Ninety-Fifth Street on Second Avenue, that will be tried to remove before the end of April. It's dying, and I don't want it to fall down on any of the ladies that are tending to the garden underneath that tree. Solid waste, our next bulk abatement is on May fourteenth. We are still working the winter trash pickup. Summer schedule will start on the twenty-sixth of May. The contacts that we have come into our office for the month of, of March was one hundred and four hundred and one contacts. That included twenty-two yard debris pickups, one hundred and fifty-four trash and recycling requests for pickup, one hundred and thirty-four street markouts. That's between the contract work that's going on with the gas company, and the buildings that are going up in town that Mike alluded to earlier. And we had ninety-one inner borough requests, that's from all of our offices in this building, Fire Department, and the recreational department. There's ninety-one requests. Okay, moving on, water and sewer. As Deborah mentioned, our guys are reading meters over the next week, week and a half. The meter report needs to be edited. We only did four-point-one-nine-oh-six million gallons.
Not thirteen?
Not thirteen.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, that was a, that was a mistake.
Four-point-nine.
I caught that in my review of the, of the report. I was away when she, she finalized it, and we needed to get it out to you before I could review it thoroughly. And as I was writing this report up, that I'm reading, and I found it.
Twice what was used the year before.
Correct.
Yeah, what, once and again, I'm sorry, four-point what? What did he say?
We actually used four-point-one-nine-oh-six million gallons. And if you look at the chlorine reuse compared to last year, that is within the parameters. If you were to use thirteen million gallons at the amount of chlorine that was used, you would think that something's not right. We're not chlorinating enough, so that was the discretion, discrepancy.
But why, why would we double what we used in water? Were there a lot of leaks in February?
Yeah, January, February, we did, yes. We had quite a few. We had, is that January, February?
February is nice.
I can't tell you why. I mean, we do have water leaks, but usage-wise, it could be because it was nice weather and people were down. We're not giving it away for free, so it is going through the system, and the, the reports that we get from this quarter's meter reads will tell us how much we're using, the average of how much we're using. So if that doesn't match up with January, February, and March's use, then there's a problem.
Okay, all right, good.
Because between the, the reads that we have at all of our, our wells and at the water plant, as well as the readings from the meters actually in the ground, and we match those, those up, then we should get an accuracy.
Yeah, I keep a spreadsheet from year to year, month to month, so I, I will look at that, but when I saw that today, I thought, oh, my gosh, what happened?
Yeah, so did I, when I, when I actually reviewed it. The one hundred and thirty-four markouts that I mentioned earlier, those are mainly for the gas company, those are done in-house with the water and sewer crew. One other thing I need to mention is that two of our wells were inspected by AC Schultes over this winter, at Ninety-second Street and at Eightieth Street. We do that frequently every five years. We did find some defects in the casing at Ninety-second Street, that was removed and replaced, and we are waiting for the report from Schultes on our Eightieth Street well. Some of the things that they, they look at is the, the casing in the well, the drive motors for the pump system itself, the well shafts, and the, the well screens. The very bottom of the well, there is a screen that keeps all the sediment and whatnot that's being pulled up through the, the well casing, from getting into our system. So that has, that's, all has to be pulled out, a video is sent down, to check out the, the actual well itself, and, and then we'll get the report on that. That's all I have right now. Any questions?
You made me feel better, thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, Grant.
All right.
Anybody questions for Grant, no? One question, Hundred and Eighth Street.
I know. It's one of the, it's one of the roads that have been on the top of our list over the last couple of years. It's, it's mostly the curbing and asphalt surface that's the issue. It is a street that needs to be renovated. You do have to understand that that, that street is double the width of a regular street, and it's one of our longest in town, so. It's gonna cost.
And that was, like, named as one of the first ones that was gonna get done in the ten-year plan, five-year plan, then the ten-year plan, and then now the.
It's been promised a long time, how's the infrastructure?
The, it's holding, I mean.
It's old, so we have to redo the whole, but utility already has.
It does need to be done, from soup to nuts, it all needs to be done.
Jill has something to say.
Yeah, I want to interrupt Grant, because he was on vacation when Mark and I have discussed this, there's two streets that we're going to look at, Hundred and Eighth and Hundred and Sixth. Mark actually went out and looked at them, scheduling a meeting with Mark, myself, and Grant to go over the program that we anticipate doing this year, and our goal, depending on the pricing, is to try to put those two streets into this year's project.
Yeah, one of, one of the biggest things holding us up on, on that is, we haven't got a definitive cost estimate from Remington Vernicle, and what it is actually gonna cost us on their part for some of the, the programs they're doing, like Ninety-Fifth Street, the, the well, I mean, the storm motor station that we have to add into our road program. So that's, that cost estimate is gonna decide on how vigorous we can be with, with our streets. The Hundred and Sixth is a, is a bay end, there's no utilities on there, it's just partial curbing, two storm drain vaults, and the street itself, so. That, that can be added on to any of these projects that we have going on right now, it won't be that expensive.
Yeah, Hundred and Eighth Street was like a tale of two cities, the south side was paved to the center by the gas company, the north side looks like it got carpet bombed.
Yeah.
Right.
There's been a lot of.
Okay.
There's been a lot of patchwork done on that.
Okay.
Yes, it's on the top of my list.
Okay.
And I am revising that list, taking off some of the stuff that we're doing this year, and some of the stuff that we had put in for capital as well, that was stated in the capital. So I'll get that to you within a week or so.
Okay.
All right?
Yep.
Utilities, anything?
Nothing to report from utilities this meeting.
Do you want to lead this discussion?
For the, the next one up, Lutheran Church, yes, they had requested, after I met with them and, and gave councils final offer, they did request to be able to come and discuss it with council, and I believe representatives are here, so I'll give them the opportunity to, to come up and chat with you.
Afternoon, Miles Truustell, Seven Acton Drive, Stone Harbor Manor. I'm a member of the R. S. Abreu Lutheran Church, a member of the council. We want to thank you for your time and your consideration for the use of the church property. The property that's being considered are two building lots across the church on Third Avenue, between Ninety-third and Ninety-second Street. There's a pending six-million-dollar project that the borough is gonna undertake, and there's pumping stations will be adjacent to the building lots that the church owns. And we were first approached by the business administrator in November about using that property to use the staging area, construction site, and for a crane to install some of the equipment that'd be used in that site. We had a second meeting in January, to determine how we would come up with a fair value for the land, and checking with commercial real estate brokers. The basic rule of thumb is return on investment, you take the value of the property, you take a fair rate of return. The value of the property that we're talking about on the borough's books are nine-hundred thousand dollars for each lot, that's a million eight, ten percent is a normal rate of return, be one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars on a yearly rate of return for the use of the property. We submitted that proposal to the. And we submitted that proposal to the business administrator, uh, back, uh, later in the year. Then G came back and said that was too high. The church went back and reevaluated the position. And in good faith and working with the borough, we reduced the ten percent ROI to five percent ROI. It would then reduce that number to a hundred fifty thousand dollars for a twenty-month period. Uh, the business administrator came back to us and said that they had come up with a Plan B, which would be then to re-align some electric wires, so they would allow a crane and some of the equipment to be placed on Ninety-Third Street, which would mean closing Ninety-Third Street. The cost that was represented to us for Atlantic State Electric to relocate those wires was fifty thousand dollars. The fifty thousand dollars was the number that we presented to us, uh, at the church as an offer for that land for a twenty-month period of time. That's basically twenty-five hundred dollars a month. Uh, the hundred fifty thousand dollar number is seventy-five hundred dollars a month. So we really have a five thousand dollar delta between what the borough was offered with the fifty thousand dollars and what the church would like to see in a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, I think in closing Ninety-Third Street, uh, it's gonna create some issues for the property owners. It's gonna create some issues for the visitors. It's gonna create challenges for traffic that are gonna want to traverse on Ninety-Third Street. Uh, if this is a twenty-month project, that's two summer seasons that this potentially will be closed, which would again, would be, be a hardship. Um, I call this an aggravation factor. I don't know how you calculate the cost for that, but I'm sure there's some dollar amount that'd be associated with having to close Ninety-Third Street to incorporate that, uh, property to do the, uh, construction. I also think that possibly you may need a larger crane, because now the crane's gonna be further away from where you may wanna place that equipment, because it's not gonna be adjacent to that site. So now you can have a bigger piece of equipment, which again, may drive up the cost of the construction cost. The other thing is that if you don't use our property, the church property, you're probably gonna have to use another site, which means now you're gonna double transport all the equipment from Site A to Site B. You may be traveling equipment back and forth, which again, is gonna create traffic and more cost to the project. So I think what we're saying is that the, the council then, uh, met, uh, about three weeks ago to discuss the fifty thousand dollar offer that was presented to us by the borough, and the council voted to reject that offer. So, we would like the, um, the borough to reconsider our offer to use that property for twenty months for a hundred fifty thousand dollars, which you think is more than fair and equitable when you predicate the basic return on investment at ten percent. We're at five percent. And the nine hundred thousand dollars is what you have in the books is probably, on the low side in today's real estate market, we could probably sell that if Morphe wanted to, which is not our intent. But we'd use nine hundred thousand dollars as a baseline for our calculation to come up with the a hundred eighty thousand dollars. So we'd like to, again, if you would take it under your advisement and can look at that hundred thousand dollar delta, I think it's very inexpensive considering all the factors that you'd wanna give us the hundred fifty thousand dollars and be able to use that property adjacent to the site where you wanna put in those pumping stations. Do you have any additional questions?
Well, we did also offer you the parking. We were gonna provide parking. In addition to the fifty thousand, we were gonna be providing the parking.
Yes, you did. And you also offered to restore the park, uh, property and also identify the church, uh, part of the property. So I looked at it as, as part of the transaction.
Do you presently rent that lot?
No, we don't.
So you have no business interest in that lot?
No, we don't.
And are you aware, uh, that the borough is not a for-profit? That is the taxpayer that would be subsidizing that? All of us in here would be paying, and I realize you're not a taxpayer here, but we would be paying that. So it's the taxpayer that you're asking to pay this money.
Well, that, that was an interesting question, 'cause we asked the borough administrator, why is the borough negotiating for the site for the contractor? I would assume or think that the contractor, that would be part of his, uh, obligation, responsibility to come up with a site that he would use for the project. And I would assume that any other project that they would do in the other locations, they're gonna have to pay some sort of fair, fair market value for land that they use to house their construction trailers or equipment, the components that are used for the project. So, I, I think this is a, is a business transaction, and the church, um, has valuable piece of property there, and that's a fair rate of return, and we're looking for a hundred fifty thousand dollars, which again, is below market value.
Do we know how much it costs, will cost for the parking and to redo the lots back to the natural state? Do we have any idea, like a number?
Well, the parking that we would be allocating is not metered, so that would be difficult for us to really see how much money that would be. But as far as the parking lot, we could get a, a figure for that. But I don't know how we could estimate the parking. And what were we allocating? Fifty spots?
No, less than that, wasn't it? Thirty-five?
No, I think it was closer. It was at least forty, because we were outlining all around the whole facility.
Right, with that, with everything.
And, and this whole project is to benefit your church, because it's going to improve the, um, the flooding in that area.
And the drainage.
Which has to, uh, inhibit much of your use of the property when we have floods. So it's, it's a win-win for your church.
With all due respect, I mean, I think that's the obligation of the borough to remediate any issues that they have with drainage, whether it's in front of the church or anywhere else. I still go back to my original premise that this is a piece of property that is gonna be used by a contractor to do a project for the borough. And I think there should be fair market value compensation to the church for the use of the property.
Is that your firm figure? I mean, are, is there any wiggle worm for you at all? Or are you just saying that's it and that you're gonna walk away or whatever?
I'm not gonna say we're gonna walk away. I mean, there's always wiggle room, but I mean, this is, we certainly aren't going to accept the fifty thousand dollars. So, um, again, I would have, whatever number, if there is a number to come back to the church and the council, I have to go back to our council for them to approve or to reject it. But, um, everything's, would be considered.
I would like to throw out some numbers to you. Um, since twenty twelve, you have had the taxpayers pay the taxes on your property to the tune of eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. You're tax-free. And we add the school taxes and the county taxes into it. It's a hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars. So the taxpayer is already paying you, we as taxpayers are paying you. Plus, you've gotten free water to the tune of almost seven thousand dollars in three years, period. So I think this is why we feel we're being more than fair, because our first thought was, if we would landscape that lot, which is totally unimproved, we would just re, not just restore it to where it was, we were going to landscape it so that it was a, an enhancement to the area. And we thought quid pro quo, the church being part of the community, being tax-exempt, et cetera, would be willing to work with us. And that's, I think, why we're all kind of astounded by, um, the figures that are being thrown around.
I appreciate your numbers, but again, I think this is looked at as more as a, uh, a commercial transaction, even though we're a nonprofit, that we have a piece of property that wants to be used for a commercial enterprise to do a project for the borough, and we're looking for compensation for that property. The parking lot right now, even though you say it's, it's, uh, it needs remediation, it's fine for us. We don't really have to do anything to, to do anything to improve it. It, it is what it is. It serves our function. And at this point in time, um, the church feels that there's too much risk to, to accept a lower amount of money for what it entails to the church at this particular time, and we would like to see a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. All right. Thank you, um, unless somebody wants, do you wanna continue to discuss?
I just would like to say on record that I am astounded at the price that the church is asking from the borough, period.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Truesdale, thank you very much. We'll be in touch. That is everything on the agenda, unless somebody has something else that you would like to discuss?
Nope.
Okay, motion towards.
Maybe, I don't know if we should do this here, or we, we haven't, something is coming up on, uh, the ordinance for noise. We haven't really discussed that in work session at all. So I, I don't feel that we should be bringing that forward as an ordinance when we haven't even brought it forward to the work session at all.
My, my understanding is that.
We did, didn't we?
Mm-mm.
Our, our old ordinance was unenforceable, correct?
Right.
Correct. And, uh, this, this ordinance is.
They have to be state-approved.
Is, is based on the state-approved, uh, noise ordinances. We had a, a, uh, public safety meeting, uh, Thursday, last Thursday, and we point-blank asked Chief Shudder if he's been through this and is he happy with it. And he said it's, it more than meets the requirements of what we need.
But there's several questions, like, uh, we were talking about decibels. Where's the machine? Who operates the machine? Uh, none of that's been discussed.
We had this discussion some time ago, and then it was sent back and said we had to go by the state rules. Yeah, we did.
Normally, you can contact the county if there's an issue, and they have a certified, uh, operator that can come out. Some municipalities, very few, hire their own qualified operator. Normally, it's done through the county.
So, so if we had a noise, let's have an example. At one of our properties, we have to pick up the phone and call the county and tell them to come over? By then, the noise might be stopped.
No, I would imagine what would happen is you would, the police department or someone would go in that area at a comparable time in order to get there and respond. At that, at that point, would be too difficult. I would think that's too difficult.
In order to prosecute the complaint, you are correct, you would have to have someone there. That doesn't mean you can't go and tell them, hey, turn it down.
Right. That's the norm we do.
If it's a persistent thing, then you would get the county operator or a certified operator on-site.
As the ordinance does it, the, the ordinance references an officer and an investigator, where one is certified and one is not.
And I didn't, I didn't talk to the chief about that, but I assume, I mean, a, a decibel meter is not that expensive of a piece of equipment. And to have somebody go to training from the police department, I don't know whether the chief envisioned that or not.
Right.
But I would think that's a doable thing, too. I don't.
Yes, it is.
Well, there are questions that I thought maybe should be answered before we decide to, just like anything that we take under consideration to have it brought forward in a work session.
But I, and I'm with you a hundred percent on that. However, if our ordinance is unenforceable at this time, we need, uh.
We don't have one.
Need to have something on the.
What part of it is unenforceable?
The entire ordinance has, was, was disapproved by the state, and they sent us down this model ordinance, which you have in front of you.
For the noise ordinance to be enforceable, you have to have the state sign off on it.
Right.
And they, and they said it wasn't.
Not in our previous ordinance, but they will in this one.
Correct. And the prosecutor had recommended also to adopt the state's model, which, again, this, the, the exact state ordinance, just Stone Harbor was.
Does anybody know, fifty decibels after eleven o'clock, what does that sound like? Coming from, coming from a place that has music in our town, what, what does that sound like? Is that like extravagant, is it not? Is it?
Apparently, the state thinks it is.
We don't wanna be like a state where we're cont, I'm, I'm, I don't wanna be a town where we're controlling every single thing in town, to the extent of the detriment of everybody having a good time or a resort town. No, do I want, you know, horrific noises? No, you don't. But I don't, I don't know where the happy medium is here. And I don't know what sixty-five decibel sounds like, or nor do I know what fifty sounds like.
I think you only get into that if it's a repeated violation. And if someone feels the noise is too loud, the police look into it. It gives them, it's not just the decibels. There's a lot of other issues, dogs barking and everything else in there that isn't controlled by the decibels. And it just gives the police the wherewithal under the state's guidance to go in and handle the situation. But if it's a repeated violation, this is my understanding. If it's a repeated violation, that's when you'd have to get the noise meters out and, and so forth.
I had a look at number four, where birds make noise, I guess.
Our exist, our existing ordinance, um, references the sixty-five and the fifty decibel, so they're not new.
They're not changing that.
They always were in there, yes, but we had no way of reading that. It was always in there, but nobody, we don't have any equipment to measure it, and nobody certified to run any equipment if we did have the equipment.
I think the birds they're talking about, Joan, are the parrots and people that have birds in their house that are loud birds. They're not talking about the birds in the trees.
Then there's drums and bells in here. No shouting, no yelling. Don't do anything.
But that's all like continual, continual noise. The shouting, the yelling, things like that. They talk about intermittent, intermittent and versus constant.
Hooting, whistling, or singing on any public streets at any time. That's what that one says.
If it's really loud and continual.
If it really annoys, but what annoys you might not annoy me.
Very true. But we have actually had that same ordinance forever where it was pretty. It was always really.
For the majority.
In the existing ordinance, it references the animals and the birds, et cetera, already. So a lot, a lot of what is in our existing ordinance is in the state's ordinance. It's, they've added a few things into it and put it into the language that they feel is acceptable. So there's really not, we're not really expanding it. It's just.
And in a commercial district, it can be louder.
I'm sorry, what?
The decibels are higher in commercial districts than they are in residential districts.
Does that say that?
Yep. You'll see there are always, there's a, you'll see a difference between what's happening in a commercial zone versus a, uh, in each of the tables.
This, I think, Joan, this, this just gives the police department the ability to go out and enforce these things if need be. It's all covered. I agree. It's like sixteen pages long in noise, noise, uh, you know. So I think it comes down to, if you have chronic complaints and you have a problem, it's covered in here, and you can go do something about it.
Right.
It certainly.
Uh, but the normal day in and day out, uh, you know, people having a party in their backyard, I don't think that's gonna be an issue, so it just lets you do what you need to do.
The standards for loud and unnecessary noise doesn't say "commercial."
If you look, the, a maximum permissible weighted sound levels.
Where are you?
When you, there's tables. That's, and you'll see there's always a difference between the residential property and again, commercial facility, public service facility. See the differences in the tables on like page six and seven?
Okay.
There is a difference between.
I'll read that on our two-minute break.
Okay.
Now, I just thought, overkill sometimes can.
And remember, it is just the first reading, too. So there's ample time to get questions addressed. And if there's something that we decide for whatever reason we want, there is ample time. It is just the first reading. Okay?
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned. Four twenty-eight. You got two minutes.
I shall not apply.
Yeah, we did have eight. So Kramer, I didn't make a lot of noise.
Yeah, there's nothing. Marcus is whispering to me, shut us down. There's nothing to be gained with this.
What?
Lutheran Church is like she's this conversation.
Who's that?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be.
Front page of the Herald.
Well.
It's white and it's silver.
Fair and we can't.
This is like, we have to try them.
Throw that out. I think it's sad. Every church and every, but it'll be from the front page of the Herald.
Yes. Yep.
So we go to Stone Harbor Pizza, huh?